Are you here to keep us in line?
Uh, sure.
I'm just gonna announce the different committees as they come in so you know who's applying for what. So we're gonna begin with the Budget Committee, right, our first candidate.
Hold on a second, Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark? Uh, welcome to Speed Dating for Candidates. Councilor Clark's not available and Councilor Cyret is unavailable tonight, too. She had surgery a couple of weeks ago, so. Go ahead, you got three minutes. Okay, great. Well, my name is Ben Clark and I'm interested in serving on this committee for a variety of reasons. Part of it has to do with just wanting to serve my community and bring the unique set of skills, knowledge, and experiences that I have. So about over the last eighteen or nineteen years, I've spent most of my career working on issues that relate to public budgeting and finance. I have practitioner experience, starting as a graduate student in the Onodoga County, New York, Budget and Management Office. And then I did analyses at the federal level, international development projects, analyzing the entire budget of the country of Tanzania two times. And then I worked as a budget analyst for the Unified Government at Athens Clark County, Georgia. And one of the special talents, I guess, that I brought to that was in cost accounting, doing a comprehensive cost accounting analysis of the entire budget of the county over a three-year period. I also taught cost accounting to international development consultants as well. And then for the last six years, I have been a faculty member either at the University of Oregon or at Cleveland State University and have taught topics on the range of finance and budgeting as well. And then sort of with that, I have, you know, written a lot of things that relate to budget, the practice of budget and finance. I'm on the Executive Committee of the Association for Budgeting and Finance. So that's kind of a real synopsis of the kind of skill set that I bring. There's also a desire to answer a question about, do the limited resources and kind of how one would approach that and what, I guess, my opinion on that would be. Is that I don't think the discussion should simply be limited to, you know, how do we allocate resources under a limited circumstance, but also having to ask the question of what services do we currently offer and what might we need to pull back on in order to provide services in another area. So I thought the question maybe was a little limited in that sense and how I would approach it. Not saying that I'm someone who would be a proponent of a zero-based budgeting, if you're familiar with that. I don't think there's a comprehensive need to evaluate everything. But some of the things that I think one should look at are, you know, what level of services are we providing now? And, you know, will the expansion greatly improve those services and potentially save money in other areas? So we could see that maybe with provision of IT services or providing new types of services to homeless where we provide home housing first and that might cut back on areas where we would have to be spending otherwise. Are we providing services in new parts of town that we don't previously provided? Does it fit into a strategic or master plan that's already in place and helped to provide that kind of service? So I could go on a lot more, but that's my three minutes, so. Well, thank you very much for coming. We'll be making the decisions later on in, I guess, in June. Do we have a date for that? I think it's in June, but. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, thanks a lot, Mr. Clark.
I barely had this. Anybody have an extra pan?
Yeah.
Oh, that's one side. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Alan Eliason and thank you for asking me to talk for a minute.
Or three.
The reason I applied was by chance. I went to a northeast neighbors meeting and a city manager said, "We need more participation from that section of Eugene." And so I applied. A little bit about my background, it's too long to talk about in three minutes. Started off as an industrial engineer, then moved back for more education, worked in personnel, and my wife decided, why not try college teaching, which I did for forty years. My areas of expertise are primarily quantitative. Quantitative areas of business, management of the computing center at the University of Oregon, all of university computing. Moved into computer science and for several years I taught software engineering. Consulting, writing, best way to know about me is to Google my name. Just Google it. Even my website, alleneliason.com, because it's too much. There's consulting, there's lots of things going on. I had a wonderful career, just wonderful, but it was time to stop teaching. Okay, what would I do in terms of budgeting? Because I've looked at this now carefully and, again, I'm quantitative. So when I look at a proposal, I want to look not only at the costs, but the benefits. And I want to quantify as much as possible the benefits. A good example now would be the jail proposal, which is marvelous, by the way. They say what it's gonna cost and they say, "This is what's gonna happen. If you don't vote for it, this is what's gonna happen. If you'll vote for it, this is what's gonna happen." That's a good cost-benefit analysis. People know. They still might argue with the numbers, but they know. But there's a second part and that deals with, well, let me get into this more. Cost-benefit analysis is my first step. And again, some of the areas of quantification in some areas are very difficult. Even when that's done, I want to then lay the proposals, because there are several for the city, against the service-level hierarchy, which is well documented in the budget proposal. In other words, I would give more weight to public safety, because that's the number-one item in the hierarchy, than I would some other areas. And public safety to me is in trouble in Eugene because we have more people coming in all the time, we have more traffic, we have more problems with the city, we have more problems with the suburbs, and we don't have enough money. So even in looking now at the budget, this is not an easy job.
Thank you, Mr. Eliason. You get bonus points for spelling your first name right.
Pardon?
You get bonus points for spelling your first name right.
He's messing with your head.
My name's Alan, too.
Oh, thank you. I recognize you, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Fioco and I'm applying for a position on the Budget Committee. So I will graduate this term from double masters in public administration and international studies and in two weeks, I start a job with performance auditing up at the state. So I'm really excited to apply to this position because I think I bring a really unique position and perspective. You know, limited resources, they plague every government. It's a difficult situation. There's a lot of decisions to be made. And I think it's really important not to react, but to look at the long-term decisions and to hear everyone's voices. And so using Eugene's tools, the triple bottom line, I think that's one of the really important places to start, looking at not just what our costs and benefits are for the community, but in terms of just economics, but also whose voices are getting heard for this and is this gonna be good for the earth? So we have to do this not by reacting, but by looking at the strategic plan, looking at the policies in place. And that's just not at only a local level, but there's so many complex policy things that come in from the state level. And in my position at the state, I know I'll have a really great perspective on what the state environment is looking like. And I have experience doing this policy analysis. So I've done this at the local level here in Eugene. I worked for the Human Rights and Neighborhood Involvement Office as an intern for the last two years. And I worked with them on an analysis of how we could provide better parks for the Latino community. How can people feel safe? And so that was an example of how we can look at how we budget and how we do that with equity on our minds. And I also worked at the Lain Community with Shanda on an audit, Shanda Miller, on public health. So looking at what these vulnerable populations really need and viewing these complex policy situations to see where the money is coming from and how we can provide that money and who has a voice in it. So I think it's really important to do this on an applied basis. And I have that experience as well through my public administration work at the university, where I worked with communities around the state and different projects on their budgets and made recommendations. So I know how tough it is to look at, you know, cutting services and what that means to the community. So even though I think it's sometimes really tempting when folks come in and everyone has a need, everyone has a really important need. And I think a lot of times we end up turning to the people with the loudest voices. So I want to be a part of a community, as I settle into Eugene and stay involved, that listens to everyone's voices, that considers it from a really strategic point of view, that considers it from a place of not just, you know, cost and dollars, but I've done the outreach, I've heard the voices. And so looking not just at aggregates, but at individuals. So it would be an honor to serve on this committee and I look forward to hearing you. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Emily.
Hello, my name's Leanne Ford and I've lived in Eugene since 2001. My family and I chose Eugene, I came from Chicago, for its sort of reputation as a livable community and its commitment to things like public transportation and bicycling, we're big bicyclists. So I am a CPA, governmental auditor formerly. I worked at Isler CPA and did audits of governments, nonprofits, Indian tribes, and Indian tribal casinos. Right now, I work at the University of Oregon. I'm the Finance Director for the College of Business and I've been in that position only since September. Prior to that, I was the Finance Director for the Information Services Department. So I've got a, you know, decent amount of experience across a couple of areas at the university. And, you know, I hope to bring the skills that I have to the service of the Budget Committee. I think one of my strengths is expressing things that are fairly complex financially in straightforward terms that are understandable to people who aren't financial experts. I do that a lot in the course of my job. I'm talking to, you know, IT people or, you know, PhDs in marketing who really don't care about accounting and budgets. So I don't know if you have any questions, if that's part of this, but that's basically all I have to share. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
My name is Daniel Ivy. You'll have to forgive the bags under my eyes. I have two young girls at home and I think the only thing that you can really agree on is that I don't get to have a lot of sleep. But although there are a handful, I think that, you know, one of the things that's really, that I'm really thankful for as a father is that it's really sort of instilled me with a renewed sense of purpose about, you know, wanting to affect positive change in the community. Changes started off small, giving blood more, prioritization of volunteering, but I still didn't feel like I was taking an active enough role in, you know, making our world a better place for them, for lack of better words. So I found myself, over the course of that time, engaging in an ever-increasing number of heated political discussions. I felt like I was constantly trying to find a reason amidst a torrent of identity politics and extreme partisanship. You know, but throughout these conversations, I learned a lot about my values and my personal belief system. So I began to become much more aware of my privilege in the world that, and my contribution to a system that's really failed a lot of people, unfortunately. It became clear to me that I had to find a way to teach my fellow community members about the importance of helping each other grow, to build each other up rather than tear each other down. So to that end, I started asking around about nonprofit board opportunities, consumer development financial institutions, but I kept coming back to the possibility of sitting on a local board or commission. Once I started looking at the various positions, it became obvious to me that the Budget Committee stood out as something, somewhere where I could combine my skill set in the financial services industry with my desire to serve the community in a more significant way. That being said, I realize the importance of policy over politics. As to say, all the rhetoric and heated discussions are useless if they don't result in actionable policy. As a member of this committee, my commitment is to help you all research, or I will research diligently to help you all come to informed decisions about the issues that we face to the budget. Now, obviously, the budget's, you know, a little beleaguered right now, but I believe that one of the most important factors when making these decisions is to, about, you know, budget choices, is to avoid anecdotal data and instead make decisions based on consistent reporting. It's very easy to make knee-jerk reactions about policy in reaction to a tragic situation, but it's our responsibility to listen to all sides and to make informed decisions based on the facts. We must be compassionate to those in need while keeping in mind the importance of stimulating economic growth in our city. Managing a budget of this magnitude is a huge task, but I believe that my experience in the financial services industry, combined with my conflict resolution skills, practiced research methodologies, as well as my ironclad integrity and work ethic, will help my position on this council very useful.
Thanks. Thanks, Daniel. Any follow-up questions, sir? Uh, no. Thank you. This is our version of Speed Dating.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Three minutes is way too short.
Hello, I'm Eliza Koschinsky and I'm here applying to be a member of the Eugene Budget Commission. Thank you for having me here tonight. I believe my background and passion for stronger Eugene would make me an excellent Budget Commission member. For the past decade, I've worked in operational and management roles at nonprofit organizations of various sizes and types. In many of these roles, I was in charge of budgeting and financial management for either a department or the organization as a whole. While the budgets were obviously smaller and less complex than the city's budget, it gave me a strong understanding of the financial concepts and the role of budgeting. In addition, I've been active in the Eugene community. I was a member of Eugene's Active Transportation Committee and have devoted significant time to volunteer work related to land use and housing. These activities have given me an understanding of how the city's government works as well as provided opportunities to listen to and learn from fellow citizens with all different perspectives of how the city should move forward. Of course, with all the various points of view, choices about how to fund different service areas are difficult. Budgeting is the act of putting our money where our mouths are. When looking at how to balance the competing priorities to make the best use of our limited resources, I feel like we need to look at several different things. First, we need to be clear about identifying what our values and strategic vision for the city is. Our city and this council has passed many ordinances and plans setting goals. The task of budgeting is to figure out how to allocate the funds to best achieve those goals. When looking at particular programs or cost centers, the Budget Committee needs to ask, does this help us achieve our goals as a city? Does it move us forward with our priorities? With that clarity, we need to ensure that we are investing in projects and programs that provide the greatest impact and return on investment in achieving our goals. We also need the agility and creativity to identify new projects that make efficient use of resources, particularly if they advance multiple goals at the same time, and provide funding for those. Finally, we need the courage to identify when a particular program isn't working. The Budget Committee members need to ask, is this expenditure the most cost-effective way to achieve our goals and priorities? Finally, we can't, as a city, meet everyone's needs and desires all the time. The money just isn't there to do all the things that we want to do. However, it's important, as we're prioritizing, to ensure that we view through a lens of equity and fairness. We need to ask, is this budget balanced? Not just in the sense of, do the numbers add up? But does it respect the diversity of our city and treat our citizens fairly? When working on organizational budgets, I found that by examining these three factors, I've been able to help organizations move forward constructively in a fiscally sound manner. I'd be honored to be able to do my part to help Eugene as a member of the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Teri Rowe. Thank you for seeing me. So I, about myself, I am a Finance and Administration Manager at the University of Oregon. I've been there for nine years. Prior to my current role, I worked in the Business Affairs Office on university budgeting and preparing quarterly reports for the legislature. I was a cash manager for the university, so making sure that funds were in balance and what to do with them when they're not. For my career, I've been in accounting and business for about twenty-five years. I have run nonprofits as well as for-profit personally-owned businesses. And since I've been at the university, I have served on a number of budget committees and currently am the Chair of the Faculty Advisory Council to the President. So I have a lot of opportunity to work through issues that are arising at the university and helping to brainstorm some of those solutions potentially. I think that in the sense of how to work with limited resources, there's not going to ever be a time likely when we will feel that we have sufficient resources to accomplish all of our goals. So within that context, I think knowing what the priorities are and as new initiatives come through or as initiatives are sort of at jeopardy of being funded, we need to continuously go back to what is that initial or primary goal set by the mayor and the council, the local community, that we need to make sure that we're investing in, in the best capacity that we can, as well as be paying attention, being mindful of who are the stakeholders that will be impacted both positively and negatively should we not be able to fund something or if we are able to fund something. And if there are other sort of smaller areas that we might be able to put some resources into that will have a larger impact, sometimes finding systems or doing some research where we might be able to seed fund something is a way to have a large impact on an area that we can't really take care of the entire problem, but can motivate a situation to become self-sufficient or move in the right direction. And I think that I like to think big about various projects that are on the line and be able to brainstorm with others who understand the financial basis around decision-making and that you just really can't afford to fund everything and really thinking outside a linear pattern of somebody wants this and so we need to do that. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you, Teri.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Voorhees and I was born and raised right here in Eugene. I chose to stay in Eugene because I love this community and I believe that it is a great place to raise a family. I have over twenty-five years of experience in the banking and financial industry and I'm also the mother of a thirteen-year-old boy. This past presidential election brought with it a lot of uncertainty for my child. My response to him was to get involved in the community, be kind and fight for what you believe in. Change begins with yourself and how you respond to those around you. But how could I tell him these things if I wasn't willing to take a look at myself? With a conversation with a great friend, she led me to the Budget Committee and perhaps applying for a position within. And I gave a lot of thought to this and felt it would be an area that I could assist in. I started my career in banking in the late eighties and worked my way up from being a check filer, which is literally filing checks, to being the accounting supervisor of loan operations. In 2004, I had the opportunity to go to work at Lain Council of Governments in the Small Business Loan Program. In 2008, we know the economy crashed and banks stopped lending money, which meant ElCog was having a hard time lending money. At about that same time, the longtime manager of ElCog passed away unexpectedly and I found myself in a position to be able to slide into the fiscal office and assist with whatever I could there. Unfortunately, nothing was written down, there were no written procedures, and we rolled up our sleeves and got to work. This gave me the opportunity to figure out where numbers came from and how they related to the budget. It was a great challenge because not only was I learning about governmental accounting, but it was also learning about the economic downturn and what it was doing to local government budgets. Tough decisions were being made as to what programs to cut, how many staff to lay off, and how to provide important services with resources that were extremely limited. This turned out to be a tremendous learning opportunity for me. I learned how the different revenue streams have an impact on the budget and how cuts at the federal or state level can have a huge impact on the delivery of services and programs. I believe the experience gained at ElCog will help me understand the budgeting process for the city and the challenges the city faces with limited resources. I know the Budget Committee fills, excuse me, the Budget Committee faces hard decisions, but I feel part of the responsibility of the committee is to ensure adequate resources are provided for programs and services that benefit the community as a whole, not just a certain area of town or a certain population. Being on the Budget Committee would give me the opportunity to understand where funds are coming from and have a voice and where I think the city must direct its resources. City Eugene is a great place to live. I want to do my heart, my part to help the city and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Good evening. My name is Christina Wozniak and I am here to, because you invited me, and I applied to be on the Eugene City Budget Committee. I am interested in being on the Eugene City Budget Committee because I would love to learn more about the internal departments and the priorities and goals of those departments. I would like to learn more about the inner workings of the city government and I would like to have a voice in, sorry, have a voice in supporting sustainable and dynamic growth for our communities. for our communities. The contributions I bring to the table are grounded in my personal and my professional experiences. I am a first-generation college graduate, and I worked my way through college taking on very few loans. I currently have a husband who is, has gone back to school to obtain his master's degree. We have a toddler in daycare, which is quite expensive, if you're not familiar with that, and a mortgage on car payment and all of that. So, I, the concept of financial constraints and living within your means is nothing new to me. I have a lot of practice and experience at that. At the professional level, I've been managing multimillion-dollar budgets for over 10 years. Currently, I'm with Sponsored Project Services at the University of Oregon, and I've been with, so, wow. So, that office is responsible for the compliance, the compliance budget and accounting oversight for all externally-funded projects on campus. For 2017, we have about $110 million in awarded funds. The portfolio I manage is $20 million. It's my responsibility to make sure that the funds are being used for the projects they're earmarked for, that we are staying in compliance with the sponsors' terms and conditions, the agreed-upon statement of work, the university's policies and procedures, and even the federal guidelines when applicable. I am a prudent person. I am compassionate and detail-oriented. I would love to get involved and feel like I'm making a difference in our community. When considering what services should be funded or at what level they should be funded, I think we need to consider what our future and current resources are to make those services sustainable, if there's additional areas that we can obtain money, and to support those services, and whether those services are going to be short-term, long-term, and what impact they will have on our community. Oh, is that my three minutes?
Wrap up, please.
Okay. So, I think our biggest priorities are focused on safety and security for all of our citizens. Education is super-important for the health and growth of our community, and then, of course, considering the growth of the city and making sure that we have funds for the necessities for infrastructure, parks, public transportation, cleaner, all of that. So, thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kristina.
Thank you.
Moving on to civilian review board interviews.
Hi. My name's Paul Brown. I retired two years ago after working for 25 years as an investigator in the Colorado State Public Defender's Office. And then I spent the last 10 years of my career working as an investigator in the federal public defender's office here in Eugene. So, since I've been retired, I've sort of been looking for volunteer opportunities that, you know, I could benefit the community and make use of some of the experience that I gained in criminal defense investigation. Service on Eugene's civilian review board seems to meet both those criteria. As a criminal defense investigator, my primary duties included reinvestigating many of the incidents which led to our client's arrest. I have reviewed countless police reports, interviewed many witnesses, including police officers, and visited lots of crime scenes. My job was to approach police investigations from the perspective of a person accused of a crime. This skeptical approach forced me to examine events from many different points of view. I sometimes uncovered bad police work, but just as often, actually if not more than that, I learned about good police work that was done fairly inconsistent with proper procedure. I had very little contact with individual Eugene police officers during my employment in the federal public defender's office here. My work involved federal police agencies like the FBI, DEA, IRS, and various other federal agencies that have law enforcement offices. I had contact with a very small number of Eugene PD officers who happened to be working on federal task force investigations that I also followed. My work came largely well after the initial incidents which led to arrest. Statements that I took often several days after an incident could have been crafted with more forethought than those taken by the police in the harsh light of immediate events. So, I'm aware of the fact that active crime scenes can be very emotional settings and also settings fraught with personal safety issues for both officers and civilians. I tried to consider those less tangible factors when evaluating a police investigation. I think citizens are sometimes frustrated by some of the actions of their police force. I think it's very important for citizens to be able to express their opinions about police work to an unbiased group like this review board. My interest in serving on the civilian review board is not to ferret out bad police work, although that may be the consequence, but I think a board like this can serve both the police and the civilian population by providing fair and reasoned review of citizens' complaints. I'm doing some volunteer work with a law firm in Portland now. I've also volunteered for Centro Latino Americano and was a track official for the track club.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Hi. My name is Sarah Delp, and I currently work as the Economic Development Program Manager for the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. I also work as the Program Director for Downtown Eugene, Inc., and the University District Business Association. I am dedicated to supporting this community and all of its invaluable resources. This includes bringing a balanced, transparent, and impartial oversight to the review process of internal investigations conducted by the City of Eugene Police Department regarding allegations of misconduct, force, and other matters. My goal is to help create accountability while also increasing and maintaining public confidence in the policing system, which is essential to the overall safety for both the community and its officers. What interests me about becoming a part of this civilian review board is the ability to help bridge communication and perception between the EPD and the public. I am deeply invested in this community. I have lived here my entire life. I am raising my family here. I graduated here, and now I work here professionally and volunteer my time here. The success of this, or the success of its safety is of great importance to me, and being able to evaluate that with a fair and impartial viewpoint is necessary for this to happen. Public safety is the driver of everything else in this community. It has an impact on businesses, the vibrancy of our unique Eugene culture, and the day-to-day lives of being everyday citizens. Currently, I engage with members of our community, merchants, stakeholders, as well as EPD and other public safety resources daily. I understand the difficult position both elements are often put in and the great need to connect the gap between them in order to create a clear and accurate message. It states in the mission of this board that its purpose is to ensure the complaints are handled fairly, thoroughly, and educated reasonably. I have a lot of faith in our citizens. I believe strongly in the integrity of our police department, and I am sure of my ability to help accomplish this task. Thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to being considered as part of this civilian review board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Albia Ferny is not here, so we're going to go to the next candidate.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Jim Hargreaves, lifelong resident of Eugene, and I've come to offer my services to the board tonight for a couple of reasons. One is I really believe in the civilian overview of a policing agencies. I think in cities of any size, it's the only way that we have of really trying to see that we get the kind of policing that we need and that we want in some organized fashion. My background that I think is important here, the last 20 years, I've been a court consultant working all over the world, helping courts in developing countries change and improve their business processes, the way they do things, and the way they operate, which means I spend an awful lot of time immersed in process and the way things happen, and looking for solutions for those courts to try and find a better way, how to become more efficient and more effective. Before that 20 years, I was a circuit court judge here in Lane County, and I obviously watched a lot of operations of the police from a very different angle than most people see it. But in any event, through all that, I think I really have some really good skills in terms of collecting, evaluating, and making recommendations from whatever material, you know, might come. And it seemed to me that that sort of fit rather well with the board's mission here and the way they do things. So, I guess the one thing, let me tell you about two things I don't believe that I bring and I wouldn't want to bring. One, I don't bring a political agenda, and two, I don't bring a social agenda. My agenda, if I am, join the board, is to do the very best I know how to contribute to a fair and impartial evaluation of whatever the situation is that comes before us and make whatever recommendations seem to be appropriate. So, it's a very simple approach for me. That's, that's what I'm about. I would be happy to join the board and help in any way I can. If you select somebody else, I am not going to curl up in a corner. So, that's my pitch, folks. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it's that straightforward and that simple for me.
Thanks, Judge.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Horstfall, and I am interested in this position on the civilian review board because I see the board as a vehicle to foster the public's trust and willingness to cooperate with law enforcement, which I think is really important right now especially. The public's perception of the police is a huge issue right now in the media here, but everywhere as well, especially with all of the allegations of excessive use of force and that sort of thing that are flying around. And this issue has really been heightened of late by the fact that anyone can take a video or a photo of a law enforcement encounter, upload it onto the internet, and make it public in hardly any time at all. And that only shows, obviously, one side of the encounter, and so I think it's really important to make sure that these things are balanced. And I think that that is, one of the functions of the board is to help the public understand what goes on, that there are procedures in place to make sure that encounters are conducted properly, and perhaps make them feel like they don't need to put their own spin on things. I think it's important that we create a system where they can trust that the system is As for what I can contribute to the board, first would be a working knowledge of the law. My practice does not focus on anything in this field. I'm a creditors' rights attorney, but I have a basic knowledge and an interest in both criminal and constitutional law. While I was in law school, I worked for the DA's office and a criminal defense attorney, not at the same time, obviously. So, in those positions, I got to experience the impact that law enforcement has on both sides of the aisle, and I was able to see how a well-conducted police investigation can really help things and how a poorly-conducted police investigation can really enhance problems and often result in outcomes that could have easily been avoided. So, that's, I, my perspective on how to kind of minimize that sort of thing, I think, would be helpful. And while I didn't love the practice of criminal law intellectually, I really feel passionate about it, and so I see this position as a way to make a positive contribution to the field with this subject that I'm passionate about. And lastly, I will offer my hometown pride and genuine excitement for this position. Oh, and that's that?
Finish up.
Oh, you want me to? Okay. I have had an interest on being on this particular board since I was in law school and found out that it existed, and I'm really excited to finally have this opportunity to apply for a position. And finally, I was born and raised in Eugene and have really enjoyed seeing the city grow and improve over the years, and I really want to make my own lasting impact on the city, and I think that this would be a way that I could do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Good evening, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen. Pardon. My name is Michael Cassahun. I am Eugene resident for the last 18 years. If I met service correctly, I moved from Fresno, California to Eugene in 1999, attended the University of Oregon, did my undergrad, and run track and cross-country. Fall in love with Eugene. It's a wonderful community, loving people, and I'm here to share with you that seeing some of the civilian border review staff and making decisions, things that affect our community, led me to believe that I would contribute in a way that is unique. I'm a bilingual. I speak Tagra, which is spoken northern Ethiopia, and Eritrea. I speak Amharic. It's also an official language in Ethiopia. And I also speak Arabic. Spent about four and a half years in Sudan as a refugee when I was a child from Ethiopia. That being said, I have come to know Eugene very well through ride-alongs with the Eugene PD at a number of occasions the last eight, nine years. Most recent one, I did one with the state of Oregon through the Springfield office to just understand the different challenges that we face, you know, law enforcement face, and the community, and the bridges that sometimes where misunderstanding can lead into discomforts and whatnot. And I also currently sit in my neighborhood association, Edgewood Third, Board Member, and listen to the community and listen in some of the police officers that I occasionally interact with, is that we have very hard-working men and women in our community, and, but at times, simple things that are misunderstood go the wrong direction versus having a bridge to close a gap that in our community, when we see people, whether it's a minority, whether it's a person with disability, whether it's, you know, a young or old male or female, I think we have a unique challenges in the community where sometimes certain groups feel they are not fully heard by our leaders, by our law enforcement. And for me, I'm the type of person, I believe in honesty, integrity, and I'm mindful of also that when there is misunderstanding and miscommunication, that the way to resolve those kind of challenges is in a diplomatic way of communicating, but also a respectful approach, respectful dialogue is the best solution in our community, and I deal with that with my own children at home. I'm a father of three children, and I'm talking fast because of the time, but that being said, I appreciate your time and look forward in seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Mary Beth Lum, and I am interviewing for the civilian review board. So I'll try to summarize for you my interest in serving on the civilian review board. First is my interest, my personal interest in civic engagement and seeking ways to be involved in my community. For me, I enjoy being part of city government. I've lived in several large cities in my adult life, including Seattle and Honolulu. And in each of those cities, I've found ways to be engaged in my government. In the city of Seattle, I served as commissioner for issues of importance to people with disabilities that was overseen by the Office for Civil Rights. So we were able to advise the city on their planning for legislation and just giving input on issues of concern to individuals with disabilities. In the city of Honolulu, I participated in a legislative task force to implement a Medicaid buy-in program. So I continue to be involved in the cities that I've lived in. And I recently moved to Eugene, probably been here about eight months. So I've been seeking ways in which I could become active in the city. My interest, particularly in the civilian review board, is its purpose to advise city council on matters relating to the police complaint process and encourage community involvement and transparency in law enforcement. I have a personal interest in law enforcement and the justice systems, especially as it involves people with disabilities. Having worked in human services for almost 10 years, serving specifically individuals with wide ranges of disability, I think that this could be a very good contribution to the advisory board. People with disabilities who statistically higher incidence of incarceration and negative involvement with law enforcement, and part of that disparity is not recognizing disability and how impairments may make it hard to discern the effects of a disability as opposed to defined behavior. You know, the city's police force, in any city, plays a very integral role. And being public servants, they do have an obligation to be open and transparent when concerns are raised and complaints are filed. I believe the civilian review board would provide, does provide a way to be part of the solution and to make positive contributions in the community. Contributions that I feel I can make to the board and do have personal, excuse me, professional expertise in developing policies and procedures and making those procedures more accessible to individuals that may have difficulty otherwise. Anyway, to wrap it up, I believe that these skills and my interest would serve the board well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, I'm Randy Prince. I'm one of the applicants for the civilian review board. I'm a chair of a neighborhood association, Amazon, formerly one of the chairs of the Neighborhood Leaders Council. Civilian Review Board, it's one of the few commissions, boards and commissions that came about primarily by the action of citizens through signature gathering for a ballot initiative. I'm an applicant who shares the sentiments of those citizens, and I can help keep the board operating to the satisfaction of those who wanted it created. Over the years, the CRB has come to become, has become a successful part of the governance of our community. It operates fairly quietly recently. That could be good or bad. It's good if it avoids controversy in its actions because it's found a comfortable space to operate in. Bad if it becomes so comfortable it shies away from the more difficult problems. If appointed, you can expect me to see things first from the citizen's perspective and then look as well from the officer's point of view and give it an equal level of attention. I really think that the attitude of the community, everybody in the community is very important, about law enforcement, very important to the way, the cohesiveness and many things beyond just the relations between police and the citizens. There has to be fairness and respect. I know the CRB doesn't do everything in regards to overseeing the police. It reviews some cases for the officer's compliance with policy, and I've witnessed many of those in meetings. Those are chosen by the staff and by officers of the board. I do think it's good if the more notable cases that come to public attention can be before the board, but that's not always possible. The CRB does look at policies of the police department and makes a limited number of recommendations. And as a citizen representative, I'll be trying to see how those policies can best serve the citizen experience. There are other things, such as training and recruiting that the CRB reviews, and I would be a valuable person to add to that. I'm curious, I'm well-read, and I follow through on the news. I'm curious about things like the de-escalation training, that's a process, a work in process, and how we recognize implicit bias and work to correct that, and new things that may not be yet in practice, such as mindfulness, something the Seattle Seahawks use, and I learned at an OHSU seminar, is being applied to police departments. Not yet here, though. I think I can make a valuable contribution to keeping the board authentic, although I am another middle-aged white male from South Eugene. I definitely appreciate diversity. My time in Michigan, working with African-Americans helped, and I've worked with Latin Latinos here, and I'm often the only Spanish speaker at my place of employment, which is the post office, and sort of an authoritarian structure, so I appreciate what police officers have to go through.
Thank you, Randy.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, city councilors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'm Carolyn Williams, and I'm really excited to be considered for the civilian review board. As a Eugene native, I have a passion for our community. To be honest, I never thought I'd end up back living in my hometown. In fact, I spent some time all the way across the world in Azerbaijan as a Peace Corps volunteer. But as we all know, Eugene is a special place, and I'm happily back at home raising my kids and building a community. The job of the CRB is to support the police department and the independent auditor's office to ensure transparency in the process of internal police affairs. I respect and appreciate that our community has taken steps to provide this board, as it is beneficial both to the police department and the community as a whole. I don't have a personal agenda, but I've been interested in the CRB for a number of years. I'm excited to help build more trust between the police department and the community so we can improve the relationship between the police and the public. I attended a CRB meeting before applying, and I was very impressed by the entire process. I know that I will be a strong asset to the board because of my unique position. Being both born and raised in Eugene, I have a deep understanding of our community and our collective history. I have a strong desire to impact and improve our future. Having lived and worked in Azerbaijan, I have a global experience that informs my views and broadens my perspective. As a substitute teacher for the Eugene 4J School District, I'm involved in many of Eugene's communities, not just in Ward 5 where I live. I noticed that there was only one woman on the board, and I would love to help even that out so we have a more equal representation and perspective. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to serving Eugene in this interesting and necessary way. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Human Rights Commission. Moving on to the Human Rights Commission.
We have two Ibrahim's.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Ibrahim Kulibali. I'm from West Africa. My country is Burkina Faso, and I live in Eugene. I wanted to be involved in this commission because, first of all, I started by the civil rights movement. When I moved in this country here, I got involved with the NWA CP, and I started working also down here at the Behavioral Hospital in Junction City, where I came to realize that a lot of our folks have been denied basic right because of the mental illness when they are in the community. Also with the NWA CP, I am actually the chairman of the Legal Writers Committee, and I spend hours listening to people who have been victims of civil rights violations. And I realized that civil rights is part of human rights, but it's kind of like a reaction to human rights violation. And being able to be involved in the broad civil, human rights movement will allow me to participate in the other side of the spectrum, who is promoting human rights. And I bring, in this commission, my experience as an immigrant with a Muslim name. And also, all of those hours listening to people who actually did even know that they have some resources out there to help them. So I think that's what I can offer to this commission. Thank you.
Hey, Beth, what happened to Laurel Burke?
She can't attend.
Moving to the 22nd.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
She got moved?
Yeah, it's on her. She...
You're on, sir. Three minutes.
Well, good evening to all of you. I'm here to join the Human Rights Commission. I've done this before. I was on the commission for at least a term plus, and I've enjoyed it very much. And this is another chapter in my life. I'm a little older and a little slower, but the desire is still there. I think I can be a good asset to the commission since it's called the Human Rights Commission. After all, it's not the American Rights, Human Rights Commission, but it's the Human Rights Commission. And I was born and raised till I was 18 elsewhere, so I bring a different perspective, and I'm old and mellow, so that helps. And it's a core belief in my system that if we start with human rights, restoring human rights to folks, that we may not solve the world's problems, but we, it would be a pretty good start. So being a naturalized citizen of Muslim faith and having Islamophobia being an issue that the Human Rights Commission is interested in looking at, I feel I might be able to represent a segment of the population that has little or no voice. So I'm hoping to be of help.
Thank you.
Hello again, I'm back. I'm Michael Cassahun again. And if I may, I just would like to continue what I've stated earlier. I think my passion is the connection to this community, that there are areas that, as a citizen, I think I come to appreciate where citizenship becomes a, the most rewarding thing in the world that we, some of us may not even think of, is that I remember 25 years ago, if any of you met me, I wouldn't have known a single word in English. But I think for me, coming to this country as a child and be able to work my way up and, you know, low poverty levels and from Wilford to other areas, to be able to become the first child in my family to earn a high school diploma and go beyond to college degree. And, you know, it taught me a wonderful opportunity in life that I cherish, and I think that comes also with challenges that we all have. And sometimes I think challenges, whether it's rights of individuals or groups, when they're challenged, I think we, we have the opportunity to speak up, to work together, not be decisive but diplomatic, and but not be shy away from our challenges. And that being said, if I am given the opportunity, I would love to serve as the civilian board review, but clearly, I'm giving the second speech here for the civil rights, the human rights, excuse me. Both of those, for me, sound very interesting, but the priority, how I feel, is that way. You know, I feel wonderful to be a member of the Lane County or the Eugene Springfield NWA CP, you know, a member of, an African, African student. We started as African Student Association of the University of Oregon some years ago now. We call it African Association of Eugene. It's an organization that very many people know, but we welcome in that, in our organization, to not just African or, like myself, who, you know, obviously, I call myself African-American as an American citizen, but we welcome anyone, whether it's an African-American born here or an African who, like me, have become a US citizen, and Americans who, you know, we enjoy interacting with in our community here in Eugene. And that being said, I think I would love to be, you know, public servant like you folks are. You volunteer your time, you serve your community, and that's what I look forward, is to be part of my community that I enjoy, and I'd love to become part of our community, not just Eugene, but the state of Oregon. I appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
And your priority of the two, between CRB and HRC? Your priority between the two boards that you've applied for?
The first priority would be the civilian review board.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, dear members of the city council. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to hear me out tonight. I am interested in serving on the Human Rights Commission because I want to better serve my community. My passion for human rights was born like myself in a communist past of a country that was eager to explore basic human rights, such as freedom of speech and freedom of the press. Out of that natural curiosity, I grew into a person who wanted to travel and explore the world. I participated in a high school exchange program in the US, followed by pursuing higher education in Scotland, and finally obtaining a master's degree in human rights at the School of Public Policy at the University College London. My passion for public service has been a focal point in my career trajectory. I started by working at the cabinet of the President of the European Parliament. I worked in advocacy for music authors' rights. Most recently, my life has brought me to this wonderful community in Lane County, Eugene, where I'm now devoted to affordable housing. The contributions I can bring to the Human Rights Commission are a different perspective and resourcefulness. What informs my current passion for human rights is that I am an immigrant in the United States. I thrive on getting to know people who are different than me. Even more important, I appreciate opportunities to think critically about my own identity and challenge my own value systems. Among the professional skills I've gained and sectors I've been involved with, my expertise and passion remain human rights and public policy. I feel that I can very strongly aid in enabling this commission to advance the achievement of its goals. I want to listen to our community members and help in developing a robust human rights framework for the city of Eugene. I want to assist in building the commission's capacity through my extensive experience and problem-solving oriented approach. Additionally, I have been following the work of the homelessness work group and would like to be able to contribute my knowledge and experience to its efforts. An example of an issue in our community that I'm looking forward to working on is the right to housing, protected in Article 25 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. I strongly believe that everyone has a fundamental human right to housing, which ensures access to safe, secure, habitable, and affordable home with freedom from forced eviction. Our local community will need to address the housing crisis. I want to be able to explore how other communities across the world handle homelessness and seek examples that can help to inform solutions we might want to use here locally. The primary reason for my commitment to this issue is that I believe stable housing to be a stepping stone to accessing and exercising all of the other basic human rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Landados. And I am applying for a position on the Human Rights Commission. Thank you very much for hearing me out today. I believe that there comes a point in all of our lives where we must decide whether to take a stand for what we believe in or to remain silent. And I believe that these moments come to us every single day. It happens when we hear someone make a sexist joke. It happens when we see police brutality. It happens when we see our undocumented friends and family scared to leave their homes. It happens when politicians at every level rise to power through oppression, through hate, through racism and sexism. These moments come to us all the time. And every single day, we make choices. Do we take a stand against oppression? Or do we take a stand in solidarity and fight for the liberation of oppressed people? For me, that means working at the University of Oregon. I worked there as a sex educator with a group of incredible and radical student activists. We work every day to educate our peers about sexual violence. And at a campus where nearly one out of four women will become sexually assaulted or attempted sexual assault on them, human rights is ever-present at my mind. Also, at the University of Oregon, tuition increases, pricing out students all the time, students like myself. I believe that education is a fundamental human right for everyone. Also, here in the city of Eugene, as you know, we have a housing crisis where people are forced to take extreme measures to find housing. We have ever-increasing unhoused population here in the city of Eugene. A quote from Angela Davis, "I'm no longer accepting the things that I cannot change. I'm changing things that I cannot accept." My first encounter with the Eugene Human Rights Commission was with the sanctuary movement here in Eugene. And I'm sure you're all very familiar with that movement. I didn't really know much about the Human Rights Commission before that. I came here when I was a very young child, undocumented, me and my mother. Since then, we have been very fortunate to have received all the documentations to be here. I am an American citizen now. I served in the US Army for six years and fought in the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. I believe that through my experiences and through the many identities that I hold, I'm in a unique position to advocate for many marginalized people in this city. Ultimately, whether I'm chosen for the Human Rights Commission or not, I will continue to fight for the city that I love, Eugene. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yes.
And the last group of candidates are for the Willamette CPC.
Hello? Okay, I don't have to move it. Hi, my name is Andrea Smith. Thank you so much for accepting my application and inviting me here for an interview. I guess the most important thing for me to let you know is that I'm a city of Eugene native, born and raised. I was a member of the City of Eugene Human Rights Council back, I think, in 2005, while I was in grad school. After grad school, I left Eugene and lived in the Kaiser area. And then I had the, a major benefit of getting to live overseas and work in both the United Arab Emirates and Costa Rica. And during this time, I learned a lot about how our natural resources are used and not used. And when I returned home, one of the biggest things that impacted my desire to move back home was knowing that I could be outside most of the year. Because as you can imagine, in the United Arab Emirates, I didn't get to be outside quite as much as I liked. And having grown up here in Eugene, that part was really important to me. And when I saw this commission available, I thought, you know, I don't really know a lot about the saving the environment or making it better, but what I do know is how I use the environment and particularly, how I use that area that's, that's part of this planning commission. So as a runner and cyclist and just general member of this community, I spend a lot of time in Amazon, excuse me, in the Amazon area, in Alton Baker. And kind of all this open space is something that you don't necessarily see everywhere. And I want to be able to be part of something that keeps that open space available for people to use. I read in my application process that originally, that area was going to be made into a golf course. And I didn't know that, of course, because I was probably far too young to even have any radar on about that when that was happening. But how sad to think that that could have been that location. And so for me, knowing that the city and the county and all the entities that came together to make that decision to not turn it into a golf course was really important. And I would hate to see any, like, future changes that could be detrimental to that, that area or really, any of our wonderful open spaces in this, in this city. So that is why I'm applying for this commission. And I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Mello. I live in Ward 4. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in wildlife science. That's wildlife with one word, not two. I moved to Eugene in 1995. And certainly after settling in here, I started volunteering with Nearby Nature and learned some of the parks around Eugene, including Amazon, Hendrix, and East Alton Baker Park, which was the name of it at that time. I've been a guide for grade school children to take them through the city parks, teaching them about nature cycles, rock cycle, and all that. And I also like to help out during summer camps and many restoration parties in various parks throughout Eugene. But I mostly enjoy working in what's now the Willamette Natural Area of Alton Baker Park. It's a wonderful resource that we have. And in fact, I'll be leading a hike tomorrow. I've served on the CPC before, first completing a partial term in 2007, 2008. And then I had two, three-year terms, ending in 2015. I've enjoyed seeing many improvements that have been made to the park over those years. And I was also a part of the CPC membership that helped work on the I-5 Bridge Project, working on some of the design enhancement features and also improving some of the paths along the Canoe Canal and throughout the park. And I was also happy that we were able to have four new talking stones added to the park with the Kalapua theme throughout the Eugene Springfield Natural Area. I also am very happy about the Silos Project, which is a community involvement one, where they're restoring about three acres of land over by the, the bridge. And I think it's brought together a lot of good community groups that were bringing back, taking out some of the invasive species and bringing back some native habitat to the area. ODOT received many national awards for that project. And they learned a valuable lesson on community involvement and outreach. If I'm selected to the CPC, I'd like to continue working to implement the park plan. Specifically, I'd like to work with parks and open spaces to see if we can get rid of the radio tower right in the middle of the natural area. This feature should not be located in a natural area. And I was very happy when the hammer-for-throw field went away. And so that one field has returned to native habitat prairie. And right now, there's a large contingent of camas flowers that are flowering throughout there. So specifically in the park plan, the radio towers were suggested to be removed because they are not natural. The Willamette Natural Area honors the Kalapua Indians that used to live on or near the land right now. So I guess my time is up. But I'd like to thank you so much for inviting me here. And thank you all for all the work you do, many, many hours of helping our city of Eugene become a wonderful area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Erin Quinn. And I was thrilled to learn that there was a citizens' planning committee for this particular area of Alton Baker. I work at the University of Oregon, and I work very close to this area and have spent the last 13 years wandering its many paths and attending shows at Cuthbert and kayaking on the Mill Race. And the opportunity to contribute to the future vision and direction for this area really appeals to me. I have not served on a committee of this kind before and would welcome the opportunity to work with others. It's such a treasure in our city. I've lived here for 14 years, and it's one of my favorite places to run and to bring my family when they visit. And it's, it's a vast resource, an open space and forested area that I think is very unique in a city of our size. And I very much want to see that preserved and enhanced. I, I will say that I end up picking up a lot of trash. Every time I take a walk on my lunch hour, I always take a bag and just try to engage with the people that I encounter along the river. I do see public safety as an aspect of being on this committee and would like to hear some more dialogue from others around this topic. The River Cleanup Event that happens annually is wonderful, but I feel like every day is an opportunity for river cleanup for me. And the Cuthbert Amphitheater is such a great cultural asset. And I'm not sure, I assumed that that was part of the East Willamette Natural Area. But I'd like to know more about how we can work social events of that magnitude into the natural areas. And I don't necessarily have a plan or a vision for this area as, other than, as a lay herbalist, I really love to see any identification of plants or anything that kind of teaches a little bit about the history of the area. And the native plant nursery is a little bit hidden, off to the side. I don't think that many people know that it's there. And so I would like to bring more educational opportunities forward for plant identification. And I think that could be worked into how the native peoples use these plants as well. So anyway, thank you for listening. And again, my name is Erin, and I'm thrilled that there is such a committee in place.
Erin.
You're welcome.
That's our last one, right, Beth? All right.
We have some free time. Thanks for the pen, Alan. I'll try to find another one during the break.
We have some up in the cabinet.
Yeah.
Couple.
Usually, I have a lot of pens in my purse, but there weren't any today.
Good candidates. Oh, wow. All in trouble.
I like the ones that don't use all their time.
I write that down.
Yeah. Is somebody coming for our next meeting already? When do we vote on this, do you know?
We have a schedule for...